We'll begin with invocation by Councilman.
Father, we thank you again for this day, for your love to us, and thank you for the privilege that we have to serve you, and thank you for Westport and this community. I pray now that you will be with each one of us as we go forward in the city business, discuss this water. The best thing that would be for us, we pray that you be with each one of us, keep this Lord in your care, and thank you for Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I will remind council members and our guests, our engineers, and Butch, that you have to pick up a mic when you talk, so hang that one, you have to turn on. All right, roll call blows, roll call. Don Rollins.
Here.
Ed Stout.
Here.
Julie Schaefer.
Here.
Bill Sargent.
Anita Lowery.
Here.
Shane Donahue.
Mike Nelson.
Here.
Jan Throgmorden.
Here.
Our city attorney, Tom Kicklack. Marcia Hunt-Gaines is here, and myself, Charlie Wasdany, Mayor. Let me just do some quick introductions here, so you kind of know who's up front here. Of course, our council members, our names are up here, we just gone through. Can't hear?
Yeah.
That better? All right. So our council members, we just went through the roll call there, their names are up here. Our treasurer, Kristy Drymon in the back, Water and Sewer Superintendent Michael Butch Bartholomew, a McClellan engineer, engineering, the engineer of record is Robert White, our Water and Sewer Commission members, Mike Mitchell, he's on the front row here, Joe Toher, I saw Joe, there you are, okay, and Andy Bachman, Bachman didn't come in, and Virgil Blackman, he's not here. This is, this is our public hearing that we're having for the water and sewer rate increase, which was defined by an ordinance, which we will vote on in our regular meeting after this hearing. And so this time that we have now is to hear from the public on the water rate increase, water and sewer rate increase. I would like to have some guidelines here set out for you, so you kind of know what the expectations are. We're allowed two minutes per speaker. This time could be extended longer, if the speaker stayed on something. Try to be precise in what you're saying, and we're all defined in that. All questions and remarks will be addressed to the mayor of the city council, Mr. Bartholomew, Robert White, and Mr. Kicklack. We have copies of the public notice, those are available in the back, if any of you have given them, I think everyone has one. The figures on the rate increases are based on our current water and sewer rates, so those numbers that are on there are based on what we currently have. When recognized, we'll ask you to come up to the podium up here and speak from the podium. Tell us your name, if you would, when you come up to the podium. I ask that there be no comments made from our audience while people are talking, just please show us some courtesy and respect for those, for all of us who are here. Central overview of our rate increase, just briefly, and this is proposed by our Water and Sewer Commission, by my request. I asked the Water Commission to propose a water and sewer rate increase, and they did that, which we brought up at our last city council meeting. These rate increases will be periodically reviewed by the Water Commission, and those anniversary dates you have on the sheets that you have before you there, it's September 14th, April, is that right, April 14th, and then again back in September. So we're asking for those three rate increases of eight percent. The idea here was to ease into a rate increase, so that it's easier for people to adjust their budgets. We're going to have a rate increase, that's inevitable, as we put in the sewer line joint effect, so we wanted to make this as painless as possible and do this over time. Plus the fact that having the rate increase starting now will also give us some reserve funds for sewer line improvements within the infrastructure of Westport. Tonight's public hearing really is the beginning of our opportunity to invest in the solution and to not pay for problems that we currently have. So that's my point of view going forward on this whole project, is that this is an investment for the city of Westport, and I hope that you can see it the same way once we get through this. Okay, I'm going to open the floor for comments and questions. You can stand and come forward to the podium and speak, speak to the council. Who's first?
I've just got a couple of questions. I'm Utah Seaguard, I live over on Data Street. Some of you know me, a couple walk in today, some of you don't. I'd like to know what the cost of the water is now, either per gallon or a thousand gallons? And one question I have, I don't know much about this, but I have a problem on page one with subsection B, and you flip on old subsection B every time, we're not increasing our rates. And most of these guys use a 500 gallon tank rather than a thousand, and if you're going to increase my rate, we need to increase theirs. That's all I got to say. I don't, like I said, I don't know much about this. It's great to me, but I can see some problems.
Can I, let me ask you, on it, you're talking about under monthly rates to be effective, item B for, for water delivered to.
No, it's the, these portable tanks, these guys that do the drilling and stuff, they come and get water out of the little faucet hiding out there, you know, open it up and buy water from the city and stuff, that's what I understand that is, a portable tank.
Yep.
Well, I think if you're going to raise my rates, you need to raise theirs sometimes. And like I said, I don't know what the cost is, it may be fifty cents for a thousand gallons, I have no idea, that's why I was asking what the cost is for a gallon or a thousand gallons, something that's simple.
Butch or Kristy, do you know the cost, our current cost per gallon?
Well.
Or per thousand gallons, I don't know if that's.
Yes, he was talking about tank truck sales, I believe, which is delivered to portable tank trucks.
I'm talking about eating, what the, what they are, what the free provision from the city of Westport for a thousand gallon cost. Regardless of what we start paying, what, what is our cost for a thousand gallon?
Okay, it's like four dollars and something.
Okay.
And then we have power costs and, and operational costs that you take to the, but the tank, the portable tank truck are just doubled per thousand cost as the rate users.
But we can increase them, increase them every six months, whatever, if you can increase our cost, same rate we're increasing mine.
The customer pays 1250 minimum for 2,000 gallons, in the tank truck, it's 1,000 gallons for 1250, the same price, so it's double the cost to them as it is to the rate.
But the customer lives here in Westport, we got to look outside the state. I'm not, I'm not giving them any credit, and I've got, I've got relatives to the rate requirement.
Okay, well, just, just to re-clarify this, the rate that a person that lives in town for 2,000 gallons is 1250, the rate for this service is 1250 for 1,000, so it's twice the price of a citizen's, of a citizen of Westport.
Twenty-five dollars for 2,000.
Pardon?
Twenty-five dollars for 2,000, please.
So their, their price is higher, as it, it is, yep, as it stands right now. Okay, and I see, pardon?
It's not showing that theirs is going to increase.
On the, yeah, on the prior two increases, okay, that's noted.
It's this 1250 for all of them, whereas we're increasing, they're not increasing at all, there's a same.
Well, theirs increase for that, Butch, like, it will, it increases.
So it just didn't get on the paper that it's going to increase.
You guys, so that everybody can hear, can you use your mics?
Yes, that just didn't get changed on any of the two papers, but that should have been increased the same way.
Eight percent?
Yes.
Okay, did you hear that?
The first page.
That was just an oversight on, on our part on this document, and that will increase at the eight percent rate as well. All right, next person, questions or comments? As you can, please remember to speak into the mics, all of us can hear.
My name is John Ritchie, I live at 107 Westwood Avenue, Westport Park. My question is simply, how have we gotten in this particular bind to start with? Our water system, sewer system is over 40 years old, there were no plans to expand, no plans to maintain, why should the people that live in it in town have to pay more? The more you take out of my pocket, the less I have to live on it. And I want to know how we gotten this predicament to start with?
Briefly, and Robert White and Butch can speak more technically about this, but our current, our current sewer plant is in a flood plain, and that designated flood plain, you cannot add on to any of those facilities there.
Understood.
So, so that facility as it is, is, is what it can do.
My point is.
We've had one, we've had one water increase, and that was about two and a half years ago, and that was a 14 percent increase. And so what we're looking at now is, we have to tie on to the Fayetteville system, we don't have a choice but to do that. And that cost for the citizen, for Westport is going to be more than our current cost of treating water. Once we get tied on, we have the bonds to pay back, and the amounts that we have to pay to Fayetteville for that treatment is going to be more than what it's costing us now. And so those costs will be shared with all the households. I think, Robert or Butch, do you want to add to that?
Yes, to give this a little bit history, when we designed the plant in the late 60s, built it in the early 70s, it was state of the art, and it was stuffed out to be crippled in capacity at a later date. Rules and regulations and requirements have changed, and new laws have been adopted over the years, 70s, 80s, and 90s, and they identified a thing called a flood zone and a floodway, which weren't even considered in the design and construction of this plant. Once the federal EPA adopted those flood regulations, that put us in violation, because a sewage treatment plant is not allowed in a flood, flood zone, much less a floodway, which that plant's in a floodway, it's been underwater several times and washed out. So when it came time for us to expand that plant, the capacity of it, we were denied several times because it was located in a flood zone. So they said, you only have two choices, construct a new plant at another location outside of the floods on our floodway, or go to another city for regional treatment, which the city of Fayetteville was an option. So that's how we got into this, the plant was designed and still operational meets the requirements that it was designed to meet, but they changed the laws and the regulations, which had put it in violation of a lot of federal and EPA laws now. And then, on top of that, they designed, or they designated White River with some deficiencies in, as a protected stream, which even made further hurdles in order, if you build a new plant, to get a discharge permit, to be able to discharge your treated water back into White River. And they're so strict that the drinking water you have at home comes from Beaver Lake or right in here, you could just take a glass of it and have a test, and it would not pass the requirements that they have attached to our sewage treatment facility. Your drinking water won't even pass the wastewater treatment requirement, so it was cheaper to go with this pipeline to Fayetteville. And in order to do that, you have to have a contract for treatment, and one of the requirements EPA again, is we rehab our existing system, which is over 40 years old, and to put it up to new standards, condition, repairs and inspections.
I understand, I understand that with the passing of time, the new regulations, they're finally catching up to a lot of people in a lot of areas. But I moved in here in 74, and that's the flood plain then. It was marked, literally marked on the map. I lived in a flood plain, people on the river would live in a flood plain. I'm just curious, if there was no room for growth, nobody even thought about growing, and all of a sudden, here we are, we've got to do something, or we're probably going to be facing one heck of a fine from EPA for not following our regulations.
Thank you. Anyone else, comments and questions?
I mean, I just had, I have a simple question, why do we need to raise the rates?
Or if it's going to come under bond money, and in order to pay those bonds back, they're going to be tied to water and sewer rates in Westport.
Right.
And so, looking at those costs, plus the additional costs that we're going to have for infrastructure, our rates are going to go up. Fayetteville, to this point Fayetteville has not given us a rate increase process. And so, we're not sure where that's going to be, but we are going to have an increase in rates for sewer, for our sewer rates. And we have looked at other towns around the area, and what their, their costs of bond are. We're well below average around the area estate for cost of water and sewer rates. And so, you know, we, we've had a good opportunity to save money in that area for a long time, but as we go into this project, we're not going to be able to afford any funding. Robert or Butch, about where are we on funding as of today?
Mayor, we have an allocation from the Arts and Natural Resources Commission, which is basically EPA revolving loan fund money, and it's 5.3 million that's been allocated. Part of that will be loan forgiveness, principal forgiveness, part of it, as the mayor said, will be loan bonded indebtedness, and that's where a lot of the extra expense for the usual rate, play off the loan terms to make the improvements.
So we, we don't know how much it's going to cost yet, but we're going to go ahead and hit the city for a 22 percent increase over two and a half years. I mean, you said two and a half years ago, we increased 14 percent, and now we're going to increase eight percent, and we don't even know, we don't even know what Fayetteville's going to sell the water to us, is that, is that what you're telling?
Well, no, we don't know what Fayetteville is going to charge us for treatment. We, our water cost that we have now, we, we're doing that, we're buying either lake water.
Right.
And so what we don't know right now is what it's going to cost us for us with treatment.
Doesn't it seem though, to, to make the research, to find that out before we start passing costs along?
Well, we have, we have gone to every agency, we've looked at Fayetteville, and have been asking this question for well over a year, maybe two years. And they are not committing those prices to us, and we don't have those yet. We know right now that we have 1.2 million dollars, Butch, is that right, 1.2 million from ANRC?
Yes, sir.
All right, that's committed, so we know that we have that much money for this project. We, we have another, how much for the, we got, we got the money for the infrastructure work on the flow rates, smoke tests, how much is that? And we get, we got the commitment on it already, didn't we?
It's part of that same money?
Part of that same 1.2 million?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, it's part of that.
Okay. And so, as we go through this, we're continuing to go back to those agencies, ANRC, and asking for grant relief and loan forgiveness. And we're in the middle of this project, we have nowhere else to go, so until they commit to us, the amount of money.
Yeah.
Okay, until, until they commit to us, we don't know exactly how much money we're going to get for this project. What we're shooting for is half of the cost, and we were looking at, at trying to reach half of the cost about two years ago, and we've been moving in that direction. I don't know, I don't know that there's anything that we haven't done to try to secure those loans and those grants. We've applied, we've gone to meetings, we've had discussions, we've done all of that. But we can't, we can't not move forward on this, because we've got to get our treatment in Fayetteville. So we're moving forward with this project, we don't have a choice.
And how much money does the, the current Water and Sewer Commission have to start this project?
The 1.2 million committed?
Is, is that, is that city funds, or is that?
No.
That's committed elsewhere?
That's, that's our.
What does the city have?
This is all, no, we're looking at, we're looking at loans and grants, why? Because we don't have funding at all from the city.
Mr. Mayor, this city paid for those current bonds for the sewer plant we have in the 80s.
Yes.
Have we lost money since the 80s? Why is there no money for this improvement? We don't, the, the city doesn't, doesn't put in sewer and pay the cost. Any sewer that's been put in the city, the residents have paid for it through a bond issue or, or through private funds. So.
Which is what.
All we've had to do is maintain and sell, right?
And that's what we're doing now, we're, we will, we will have a bond for this cost at the end of this project.
Where, where has all the money went since the bond has been paid for?
All of our bonds aren't paid for. Can you, can you, Butch?
Yes, we just, those 30 and 40 year bonds that were sold back in the early 70s, we just made the final payment on those this past year. We've been paying on those every year.
And, and so we've just been breaking even with our water and sewer?
Pretty much, with the maintenance and that's right.
That's kind of hard, I, I hope that's hard for everybody here to swallow, that, that with, with our rates, we're breaking even. I mean, we, simply maintaining a system, you would think you would be making some money.
I understand what you're saying. I don't want to raise taxes, I don't want to raise any cost that we have, and sometimes, but sometimes we do have to. And I think what might be a good idea, Butch, is, you know, Butch has the history that for a long time, we didn't have any increases, he said he had asked, asked commission to do that, and they didn't, and then we had to come up with that rather large increase, which upset some people. But I think it'd be good, Butch, if you, about what do you have, do you fund? How much do we make at the end of a month? It's not that much money, as I understand it, but maybe that would help Heath to understand, and other folks, we're not, we're not putting a lot of money away somewhere and socking away, isn't that true?
No, we have bond reserves, that the money goes in for guarantee, your bond payments, if you don't have enough money, but every month in your council report, you get the financial of the utility, it shows all your income, all your expenses, and, and those accounts, and how much you're in there. So we have that information every month.
But about, about would you say, what would you say is, are we at a plus at the end of each month normally?
Well, normally.
About how much, Would you say?
Not very much. We've, we've had low rates, cheap rates for a long time.
And that's what I, I understand, and I think it would be good for people to realize, we're not, we're not putting a whole lot of money away here to save for a rainy day. I, I don't think there's much money from month to month, if that's.
Well, and that's part, that's part of my issue, because I feel like the Westport rates, by the time you pay for your water and then double that for your sewer, I really think we're paying a, a pretty good penny, you know, the surrounding cities, everybody I talk to has a cheaper water bill than them. So with, with that being said, I just feel like maintaining a system, we should have some reserve left over, and if we don't, I feel like it's, it's a dereliction of, of your duty to, to be in this situation where, where you're stuck running to beg for money because you have, you have to, you have to expand. It, it, it's simple reason that if, if you're going to stay stagnant, you're going to die. If you're not growing, you're dying. So we, we sit here, we have a city coming to us saying, well, in the past two and a half years, we need a 22 percent increase, because we've sat on our duffs and have a plan for this. That's what, that's what I'm here. Now, that may not be the case, but that's, that's certainly the case that you've presented since I've been, that, that we have all these excuses, EPA, this, that, and the other, we built in the wrong spot, but over the last 60 years, 50 years, however long it's been, Butch, we don't have anything to show for, we're not ready for any kind of improvement, any kind of expansion in this city. Do we, do we get to sit here and expect that the same, same controls, the same planning will be taken with, with, with our, with the expansion that you guys are going to force on us? I mean, are we going to be in the same place in 50 years? Where the city's sat around not planning for anything, and suddenly we're out begging and borrowing again, because we don't, we don't have any money put back, we, we just ran everything into the ground? I mean, that's, that's what you've said, we, we, we don't make enough money to even properly maintain our system, right? Isn't that, I mean, that's, that's the case you've made for yourself.
All right, well, here's the best way that I can answer what you're saying. I can't argue with you that we don't have a reserve amount of money to take care of all these OBLs, that's black and white on a paper. In the past 40 years, we could have done systematic increases of water and sewer rates over the years, and had those reserves, and kept up with these better than we did. We didn't do that. If we had done that, our water and sewer rates today would be a lot more than they currently are. Those rate increases would have caught up, I mean, we would have been paying for those online. So today's rates that we have are without those past rate increases. But what we're asking for now, and from my point of view is this, we, we don't have a choice but to tie on to the Fayetteville plant, we don't have a choice, we have to do that, unless everybody in Westport wants a critical fourth party. So we're going to do that, and we're in that process doing it now, and we're well into that process. We're going to have to pay for a lot of this project through bonds. There's no other way around it, unless for some reason we get a flood of grants from the government, but I don't think that's going to happen. So we're looking at falling to half the cost of this project through the bonds. The only way we can fill the bonds is that we have, we have a source of money that the bonding agencies would say, all right, we will own that money, because we know that the, that the payment is coming from this source right here, and that's going to be rate increases on wastewater treatment. That's where we are today. So what I'm asking, the reason I went to the commission, was because I wanted to start a rate increase now, for the two reasons I mentioned at the beginning. a rate increase now for the two reasons I mentioned at the beginning of this meeting. One reason is so that the citizens of Westport would not get a large increase once we tie onto this and we have no choice but to raise rates. So along the way, over the next year, I know, I know that fixed incomes are problems, I understand all that, but there are going to be slower rate increases if people can adjust their budgets. I thought that was a fair thing to do, that's why I asked the Commission for a rate increase. The other thing is, over this period of time at least, we'll have, we will build up some reserves. Like, those reserves can be used for a variety of things. One of them may be to help with our infrastructure work needs help. Our infrastructure needs help. I think this last year, we, uh, we repaired two wastewater lines that reduced our inflow significantly. I don't know what that percentage is, but it, but it decreased that inflow significantly. That's one of the costs of treatment. If we have rainwater coming in our treatment, to our, our sewer, we're treating rainwater. We don't want to do that. We don't want to send rainwater to Fayetteville for that. So it, it can help with the infrastructure. And then, uh, and also get us, in, in, in a system where, where we are putting back reserve money for future investment in our infrastructure. If, if grants become available for this, we will go after it. If NRAC says that they have more money and that they can invest in the Westport system, or in the pipeline going to, to Fayetteville, then we will take that money and we will, we will go that route. We, we are looking hard at all of the sources of money that we can to help with this process. But we are here today, and we've got to move forward with this. And I, I can't help you with forty years ago, and I can't help you with thirty years. I, I don't know, I, I don't know the reason for all of that, but I know the reason that I'm asking this now to have a rate increase now is because I think it's absolutely necessary that we do that for reasons. And, uh, and I don't know where else to go for that money except to the citizens of Westport. It's difficult for, for families who are, are on fixed incomes, for single parent families, it's difficult to, but we don't, we have nowhere, we have nowhere else to go with that. And we will continue to pursue available funds, grants, uh, and loans and, and bond issues to help along with that. Now, the, the, the Water Commission asked for, uh, a couple of things, well, asked for one thing mainly in the process. And that is that, oh, at every, at every increase here along the way, so this first one here, we're asking for that. As we go through the next six months, they're going to look at what, uh, what progress we've made on the pipeline, uh, progress we've made with loans and with grants. If they, if they see extra money coming in, they're going to come back to the council and say, maybe we don't need this next eight percent increase, or if they see we're getting further behind, they may, they may say, maybe we need to bump that up to ten. I, I mean, it's open ended, they, they want to keep the handle on it. So we're not asking for a whole year of eight, of three eight percent increases without reviewing that often to see where we stand. We're, we're not trying to put anything over on anybody. I'm keeping as open, uh, the line of communication as I know how, and as transparent as we can be. And I, I don't know what else to say to that.
I mean, I mean, it sounds like it's, it's a done deal, and, uh, the people in Westport just have to live with it. I mean, we're, we, we sit here and, and we fund one mistake after another, and, and every time you run into this problem, you come back, we need more taxes, we need, we need more taxes, and it's, it gets aggravated to us. And, and you've got people in this room that, that are going to have to, to make decisions on what they eat, what medications they purchase, and, and you guys, I think you take it a little too lightly. When you, when you start just broadly raising taxes like that, you hurt people. There, there's, there's hurt in this town, and, and our representatives are up here nonchalantly, well, you know, this is going to happen, I don't see, there's no other, there's no other, uh, option, we have to do this. There's always options, Mr. Mayor, and I, I...
I honestly can't find another option, what we can do with our sewer, with our wastewater.
I hope this has weighed on you, though, the decisions that we make.
Well, you want to talk to my wife about that? She can tell you how much this weighs on you. I don't take this lightly at all, at all. I spend, I've spent a lot of hours on this, a learning curve of its speed. Since April, and I was notified by ADEQ, by their lawyer, that, that my name is at the top of this list. I have spent a lot of hours, a lot of conversations with both our local people, Butch, our engineers, people in, in Little Rock and ADEQ office, uh, and, and have, have learned as much as I can about this process. And, and, and any time that, that I have felt that, that maybe we should be moving on faster, or questions I had about funding or whatever, I have taken those questions and concerns directly to Mr. Bart Dolemu, and to Robert White, and if necessary, to Kevin Sewell, or to Mo, uh, uh, Shoffey at ADEQ, and with ANRC for funding. None of this is being taken lightly. And I honestly, we don't have, we can't continue to use our plant. We cannot do that. It, it, it doesn't function to the, to the specifications that it has to function. And it seems like all small towns that are possible are being consolidated into larger systems. And we're one of those smaller towns in northwest Arkansas, and ADEQ really would rather us be tied into a major system Fayetteville than to have our own sewer plant and try to operate with. And our own sewer plant would be considerably more expensive than us tying a pipeline to Fayetteville. We do know that. So there are, there we are.
This is a twelve person microphone. Okay, Carolyn Martin, I have a couple of questions. I'll ask the second one first, the easy one. After we pay for these increases, we imagine we will be hooked into Fayetteville, correct? Who is responsible for maintaining that line?
Robert, do we know where we're, do we know where we are on the maintenance from, uh, our pumping station to Fayetteville?
The current discussion is a gravity flow line from the city of Westport down to the Baptist Ford area, then a pump station there, and a pressure pipe from the pump station into the south, south side of Fayetteville, near the, uh, Jubilee Kitchen Center there, north of the Fort Wright Expressway. Basically, the people with Fayetteville have indicated that the pump station and the pipe from that pump station in, into the city of Fayetteville, much of its longer distance easily stays back to, uh, to control and maintain that. The gravity line from the existing wastewater plant down to the Baptist Ford area would be, uh, city of Westport to operate and maintain, just if you're operating and maintaining your collection system, the existing system, you have that.
Okay, and is that included in our rate increases? It's not going to come by three years from now, you, your money, because we have to maintain this pipe? I don't like surprises.
I don't, I think, Butch, you can weigh on this. Right now, our city crew maintains and takes readings every day. We, we, part of, part of what our city crew does every day, seven days a week, is, is they take readings off of our plants, uh, they maintain the system, they make repairs and so on, and that, that includes where that line is going to be gravity fed from. So we, we have those daily costs right now. And so are those, would those costs reasonably increased? They, they, if all we're taking care of and maintaining is a gravity flow pipe to their pump station?
That pipeline will be less expensive to maintain than your existing plant, so there should be cost savings for the city maintenance. The lift station, if Fayetteville takes over, they will be including the cost of operating, maintaining that lift station in your treatment contract. So the treatment contract, uh, will, will incorporate those costs, and there should be a known, known price once they get their contract, uh, in, in place.
Alright, um, I was intrigued by something Butch said before about the quality of our water in Westport, that we can't drink what would come out of the Westport plant now. Could you talk about that a little bit?
The, the, Adam, he was referring to, uh, ADEQ and EPA has established a, uh, limit on total dissolved solids in, in the wastewater going into the Westport River. That limit is below drinking water standards and is probably below most of the, most of the water that folks in northwest Arkansas drink. That's, that's a parameter that, uh, basically requires extensive, uh, treatment, diverse osmosis, or some other type of treatment to remove total dissolved solids.
So we're not drinking that water? That's not coming through our pipes?
No, your, your, your water comes from Beaver Lake to the city of Fayetteville, and from city of Fayetteville to, to Westport. Uh, I think what he was trying to explain is the discharge limits that the city is facing, which every five years, they get a new discharge permit, your city has a new discharge permit, and every five years, it's, they takes that opportunity to tighten the screws a little more on what the city's allowed to do with, you know, the plant that's not, you can't expand it, you can't, uh, upgrade it, but you're supposed to make more stringent limits with it that it never was designed to be.
Okay, and now, a couple of years ago, we had a fourteen percent increase. I was given to understand that was to repair and maintain our water lines. Now, is that the old water lines? Or is it the same water line, we're getting water from Beaver Lake? Could you, could you clarify that a little bit? Because I want to make sure that I paid this extra money for something.
I would think you're talking about existing water distribution and wastewater collection system, but I wasn't involved in that.
No, we had all these leaks. I'm sure a lot of people remember the leaks. We had all these leaks, and they asked us fourteen percent increase to repair the leaks and maintain the lines. Now, was it for our old water system, or was it for this Beaver Lake thing? Do they come through the same thing? I don't understand. I just want to make sure I spent my money wisely, as the city should make sure they're spending our money wisely.
There's a pipeline that runs from Greenland to Westport, that brings the water from Fayetteville and from Beaver Lake, and that pipeline's been in place, what, twenty-five years, Butch?
Nineteen eighty.
Nineteen eighty, so whatever that is. So that, that might be considered an old water line. I don't know if that's the one that's leaking, or it's the original distribution system. Most likely, it's the original distribution system, and these guys are constantly having to make repairs to it because it's, it's been in place for over forty years, it's been there longer than the wastewater plant, so...
I, I thought it was a little more local than that. I thought it was the water pipes that go up to our streets and everything that had not been maintained well, and that they needed the fourteen percent increase to fix. I'm, I'm just trying to understand, we're getting Beaver Lake water now, and it's coming through those same pipes that would fix? Is that true, Butch?
Yes, we fix and repair lines as it becomes evident we have a problem. And it's like, you know, chasing, it's an ongoing problem that always occurs with changed temperatures and natural, natural causes.
Yeah, but I understand you reduced that problem a few years ago after the increase. We went from like forty percent leakage down to like fifteen or twenty percent, so that was stuff that perhaps should have been done a few years ago, that was not done routinely, and that's why I asked that first question about the maintenance of the pipeline. I want to make sure that we're all paying more money, that we're going to get some value for that.
Yes, we will have to maintain those pipelines, and like Mr. White said, it will be determined on the contract whether we operate the pump station or the city of Fayetteville does. But the line from here to, uh, the Baptist Ford community or area will be under our maintenance and control regardless, and we will be required to maintain that.
And will that increase our water bill again?
Uh, that will be a part of this, um, loan and grant money we're able to obtain, if included in there.
Right, for the next three increases, I'm talking about after that.
Well, we don't know what the future holds on that until we figure out how much money we will be able to receive in grants, and how much will actually be loan money we do have to repay.
Right, but I heard you speak before about these rate increases would provide some money to set aside. I believe, um, Mayor Rosetti mentioned that, to set aside so that we would have some money and would not have to go back to the people. And that money should be used to maintain the line.
Yes, and...
And will it?
Yes, and this year alone, we've, uh, it's been necessary for us to spend close to fifty thousand dollars extra on the upgrades to our existing treatment facility, uh, just to get by to use it until this pipeline can be completed and put in use. And those funds have came right out of our operating, um, maintenance, for the department, not the city. And we could make thirty-seven thousand dollars improvements just on the existing treatment facility, not counting the repairs we've made in the field and on our distribution and collection system. The one thing that I may have not been clear about, while I, I was talking about the discharge of our wastewater, that's our sewage water out of our plant, not our drinking water. They wanted, they want, they require the water to come out of the sewage treatment plant at such a purity level that the drinking water will not even meet that. I was trying to make a comparison, and that's how, how strict, uh, requirements have been placed on this screen and on our existing plant.
Yeah, but the sewage water goes back into the ground, becomes groundwater, right?
No, it's discharged into the water.
Oh, so the kids' plan, okay.
But the drinking water is a totally separate issue. I was just using it as a comparison, the drinking water won't even pass our sewage discharge. You took clean water out of your tap and let them test it, it won't meet the requirements that they're asking us to meet with our sewage treatment plant.
Okay, one last question, and then I'll get away from here. A couple of years ago, we had a problem with the Water Commission not having the monies to meet their bills. What is the situation now as far as, um, the money that you have to ongoing, to, you know, spend for any of these improvements and for any nasty surprises that may come along?
Well, like I said, we, we've had to spend almost fifty thousand dollars that was under plan for actually in the past. We're debt free, we've actually paid off two existing loans early, one was on a water storage tank, and, uh, I can't recall what the other one was on, but it was paid off several years early. We have done that out of revenue, um, in bond reserves to try to lessen the payment requirements that would be placed on the utility with these original projects, or this original project, so... They're debt free, all the, all the bills are paid out, and we're making improvements.
And what about your reserves?
Reserves, um, they're not much. Like I said, we have to spend close to fifty thousand dollars so far just in the past year on, um, maintenance items. So I fit pretty well with the reserve there.
So we're not in a good situation here, then? I mean, our water's not good, we've got to hook up the Fayetteville, we don't have reserves, I mean, sewer, water, okay, sewer, I mean, we're in a situation, as Mr. Rosetti said, we don't have many options.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. They haven't given us any options. They've told us what needs to be done, and, and they're going to require us to do that. And none of us like it, and none of us like rate increases, no one likes, uh, these expensive projects. And another thing, we have so few customers, uh, to try to pay these loans back. This project would cost the same if, if we had three times the population. The pipeline project would still cost the same, but if you had three times the amount of people sharing in the cost of, of paying these loans back. So we have a few customers, it's going to take... So we have a few customers, it's going to take on a big job, and this money is going to help us with the assessment of our existing collection system and the repairs of those and other unforeseen costs.
Well, maybe going forward, the mayor and the council could think of ways to attract more people to West Fork. I think that would be a very good job. Thank you.
My name's Joe Corr, I'm a volunteer member of the Water and Sewer Commission. I'm also one of the people that will be shouldering this person, as I was right behind his head. I think one of the things that would be productive for us is, one of the things that was unpleasant for me was the open-ended nature of what's going on with Fayetteville. There had been some personnel realignments at Fayetteville that has affected what we're trying to do, the reason it's open-ended, why they can't give us, why it's not set in stone, why we really truly don't know what we're looking at. It might be productive if Butch, you and Robert were to talk about what you've run into as far as the personnel shifts in Fayetteville, and why things aren't wrapped up and we don't have surety. And I think that, Mr. Mayor, that was one of the reasons why we did the 8% increase, because we truly don't know what we're facing. There's a reason for that. It's not malfeasance, it's not negligence, it's that we're working with another town that's had some personnel issues, and the cost we're trying to nail down, I think you could probably speak to it better than I can.
Mayor, if I could address that. City Fayetteville had a fellow that was basically putting together the agreement between the two cities. His position, he left, I believe in February of this year, and was going to go ahead and finish the agreement at his new job. That hasn't happened, his position hasn't been filled. Everybody we talked to at City Hall says, well, we're covered up with our normal workload and we're trying to hire somebody to fill that position and we'll let them take care of it when they get the position filled. Well, that doesn't really address your concerns about what the treatment costs are going to be. Fayetteville, as an example, they have a similar contract with Elkins, but basically they wanted to go back to and establish the agreement format a little differently than what they have with West with Elkins. So we're not sure what the situation is. I was in a meeting a week ago and they indicated that there may be some activity putting the agreement together, but it's still hard to pin anybody down after this one guy left and nailed and refilled his position and nobody else wants to pick up the ball and run with it. So we're still beating on those folks to try to get something done in there.
Where I live, I'm on 70th. And I'm sure a lot of people inside the city limits of West Fork are on 70th. What's the projected time for putting me on the system? I'm going to be paying for it.
Your location, so what'd you say your address was?
285 Davis.
Davis Street.
Butterfield, between Stock, Stock Apple and Butterfield.
You do not, you do not pay a sewer charge at this time? You pay water only? That's great.
True, yeah. But my water bill is going up because of the sewer problem.
Well, it's not only because of the sewer problem, this is addressing other issues as well. It's for the whole new children. Now, I might be talking on a turn on this, but the sewer collection and pumping problem or project will only be reflected on the people that are actually on sewer and receiving the service. You will not be paying a sewer bill.
But my water bill's going up because of the sewer problem.
On this increase, it's not only because of the sewer problem.
Well, but it's mainly because of the sewer problem.
That's one of the issues.
The biggest issue. That's my question. When am I projected to get on sewer?
That area, there is not a design collection system for the area, I believe you live in, on Davis Street.
So most of the people in West Fork are not going to be on the sewer? Because I'd say most of the people are on 70th, just inside the city limits.
No, we have 1,050, I believe, water customers, and 800 of those are served by sanitary sewer.
800 customers or 800 population?
800 customers.
Sir, my name's Anita Lowry, I'm your neighbor, I'm also your councilperson. And I understand what you're saying, I don't have...
You live on Elkins?
I live on Elkins, I see you walking all the time. I'm in the little white car that probably almost runs over you sometimes. Sorry. I know what you're saying, I'm not on sewer, I'm on 70th. It's gonna, most of the time, I'm seeing the parent, my water bill's under $12 in the winter, we don't even use much water. So it's going to make my bill go up also. But I've lived here all my life, and I can't fix what happened 30 or 40 years ago either, but I'm willing to do that to get our city put on sewer, because we don't have a choice. And they were talking about the gentleman that started this project out, he, his name was Dave Jorgensen. He, I had called him multiple times, he was super helpful, but he left. And so, they're right, they haven't replaced him, and there is no one else to call, because anytime someone called and asked me questions, I would call Dave. He told me to call him anytime. And so, I'm just letting you know that, you know, I understand what you're saying and that it's going to make our water bills go up. I don't like it, I'm on fixed income also, where I, you know, I have to watch my pennies and stuff. But, you know, I don't hardly use probably enough water to have them drive out there and read my water meter some nights in the winter, so I kind of understand what you're saying, I kind of, I don't take this lightly when we ask the citizens of West Fork. My parents live here, you know, I have strong ties to this community, and I just think this is what we have to do to progress and move better, and if we have these good systems to offer, maybe building will go up, we won't have the issues. But if you, anyone here can do what I do, I call the City of Fayetteville and bug people, who do I talk to for this? Who do I need to ask this? So that's another suggestion, if you don't really, you know, understand, call your councilman in your district. And I'd be glad to stop by, and I mean that to everybody, not just give them my word.
I'm Pat Connor, and I live on Main Street. I'm about to show my complete ignorance of all this, but I just have a concern about what a gentleman a few minutes ago was talking about, that there's not a contract in place. When they do get a contract, how often is that reviewed? Because, you know, their costs are going to increase, how do we know that over a period of time, we actually may not, may end up paying more than if we put in a whole new treatment system, which of course I understand would be just astronomical. But my concern is, you know, you don't go in and try to buy something if you don't know the cost of it. And I'm just kind of concerned about the cost and what about the increases? Is that contract good or indefinite at that price, or how does that work?
I think the contract they're considering is proportional to what the ratepayers in the City of Fayetteville pay. So if they have an increase for their ratepayers, they will have a proportional increase for the City of West Fork. That provides some protection for the West Fork citizens in that they don't just raise your rates and don't do anything in Fayetteville. Basically, the contract agreement, the attorneys will have a chance to look at that, and, you know, those protections will need to be in there. Elkins pays them and thinks it's expensive, but it's not so expensive that they can't go out and build their own wastewater plants. It's expensive all over, everywhere in Northwest Arkansas, everybody's got stringent limits. We're blessed with nice streams and we're cursed with nice streams because we have expensive treatment requirements as a result.
I'm just concerned that, you know, I mean, basically, if there are no options, then they can charge you anything, and there's nothing you can do about it because there are no other options. Well, that kind of concerns me down the road as well as when it gets down to contract now, which I understand the issues that I'm sure are frustrating to trying to deal with this right now, since you can't get any answers. But thank you.
Well, the rate increases also, the state has some control over rate increases, they can't just come in like gouging with the gas tanks, you know, during...
Right, okay.
So there are controls in place.
Okay, as I said, I'm totally ignorant to how any of this works, so it's just kind of more curiosity. Thank you.
My name is Lenny Ann Davis and I live on Riverwood. And Mr. Mayor and esteemed Council, I've been sitting here listening all night, and I've heard several questions that haven't actually been answered. And I think that's where the frustration level is coming, because it seems like we're getting a lot of talk, talk, talk around and around and around in circles, but nobody's answering direct questions. Okay? I am all for progress, and I totally understand we need to do this to keep our city growing and going along. We've got to do this, we have no choice, I understand that. My thing is, I'm with these other people, a lot of us are on fixed incomes or fixed budgets. You're asking us to make really hard choices about our budgets, that we're going to have to make choices, whether we're going to do this or that or the other. It would be a really good faith motion for the council to maybe consider tightening some budgets in this city, and I understand it's hard, but we've all seen it's public information, budgets, money being wasted, I see city vehicles driving around, wasting gas that we pay for. There's a lot of things that I can see that the city could tighten up a little bit if they're built, that they're asking us to do. And we'd probably like to see them, to show us that, you know, y'all are willing to do the same thing that we're going to have to do. I did really have a question as well, Tom. I appreciate y'all listening, thank you very much.
Counsel, any comments you'd like to make?
I make a motion that we close the special meeting.
Second.
All in favor of closing the special meeting, the public hearing, say yes.
Yes.
opposed by a light sign. Convene the regular council meeting at 7:00. We'll do roll call vote, Don Rollins.
Here.
Ed Stapp.
Here.
Mike Nelson.
Here.
Bill Sargent.
Here.
Jan Throgmorden.
Here.
Anita Lowry.
Here.
Our city attorney, Tom Kipplack.
Hi.
City clerk, Marsha Hunt, myself, Charlie Rosetti.
Julie Schaefer here.
Julie Schaefer? Sorry. Shane Donahue. I'm going to ask the council if we can move our audit report up to this point in our agenda.
I make a motion to amend that.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Jim, the floor is yours.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
We did an audit of the city and the water and sewer, and I got both reports, I've gone over it to the city treasurer, the mayor, and the council superintendent last week. And what I'm going to do is hit some high spots in the report, so I'm not going to read you too many pages without page. And I'm going to do the city first. The audit report is based on, prepared on a regulatory basis accounting, and I said that before, that's what the state audit itself accepts. And so therefore, and so we have an unmodified opinion based on that basis of accounting. The general fund for the year 2013 had revenues in excess of expenses of $26,138. The street fund had excess $8,260, and the parks department had excess of $31,800. On the parks department note, there was a balance of $221,000 that's on the note at the end of the year. We also issued an internal control report in compliance with laws and regulations. We mentioned one, but we consider a material weakness in internal control, and that is the segregation of duties, which we mention every year. You don't have one or two people working, you can't get proper ones, but we have to mention it because it is a material weakness in internal control. And again, we recommend that the council can continue looking at all the financial results every month, and that helps kind of mitigate the problem, okay? We issued a management letter that hit two items on it, and the first item was, we found there are really no accounting controls in the parks department for gate fees, that when people come in to events and pay their money, there's no control over their money at all. And we recommend that they adopt some policies, sell tickets, account for the ticket numbers or something to control that cash coming in, make sure it's where it's on, and so forth. The other item was, those exchange of assets in the police department, the judge signed over some county guns to the city, and the police chief exchanged them for other guns, and that, but he did not get council approval to do that, and then the complaints. So that was the other item we found, that he should have gotten council approval, you can't do that exchange without council approval. And I found nowhere in the ministry that transaction had been approved by the county. And that kind of the highest spot for the city. Anybody got any questions, I will attempt to answer. Okay, so then we're going to go on to the water and sewer. We had an unmodified opinion on it also. The revenue for the year of 2013 was 608,000, it was down from 633,000 the year before, so they were down, the revenue was down. The revenues decreased 3.9%, but the water purchases only decreased 1.65% over the prior year, and that's because the water loss increased from one year to the next. The bottom line of, for the year was a net loss of $25,430 in the water and sewer for 2013. The year before was a profit of $30,591, so there was a $55,000 swing from one year to the next. And that was basically because of the... And that was basically because of the revenue being down, the increased water loss and expenses of magnets and paying for comp time, all this sort of rented out. At the end of December of 2013, the department had a balance due of $18,000 on that last revenue bond paid. They paid off a $15,000 note to the NRC in the year and used reserve funds that the side of the safety fund paid off, which was a good move, because they had to leave this fund setting up anyway to make a paper debt on it. The internal control report again shows that one weakness, segregation of duties, just like the city did, some people may have the same recommendation on that, that sewer commission and council will hit the numbers that it wants to be sure that keeps that kind of council in a business situation. And I see, we just digest version. Anybody got any questions on that? Well, thank you.
Okay, let me ask for adoption of the agenda with the one amendment that I requested.
I make a motion to adopt the agenda, Jim being the doctor, before the adoption.
And a second. Ed seconded, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Pose by like sign. Thank you. Approval of amendments for the July council meeting.
I make a motion to approve amendments.
I second.
Okay, Jan, Jan was second. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Pose by like sign. Motion carries. We'll have, we'll have a public forum now, sending two, two minutes per speaker. All remarks are addressed to the city council. The council and mayor may ask questions of the speaker or respond to questions or comments. No official action will be taken on comments during the public forum. Do we have anybody who wants to address the council? Thank you. Business reports, do we have any reports from any departments on business that need to be presented tonight? Library, court, planning commission, police department, streets, parks, renewable resource center, guard department, treasurer. Okay, we'll move on then to old business. Ordinance 439, this is our water sewer wastewater rate increase. We, we published the ordinance, we've had a public hearing, we have the ordinance before us, we can suspend the rule and do this on, see what we need tonight, we'll move forward with this ordinance. So I will entertain a motion to have that.
I make a motion to suspend the rules and read by title on the ordinance in 439.
All right, roll call vote.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Okay, yes.
I guess the, the default rate for buying water, filling your own tank, hasn't changed. I'm not sure what we wanted to change that to.
It'll change.
But it's not changed, and I think that's what you're mentioning, we could, we could amend that tonight, I think, because I think that's distinct from the rate that a water customer has. Here's why I think that. The reason we had to introduce this ordinance last month and then publish the rate, the actual rate in the ordinance in the paper, and then have a public hearing, is because the due process rights are associated with fundamental utilities like water. You don't just turn someone's water off without warning them, give them a chance to get things right, fix it, or explain themselves, and then give them a shut off notice. You also don't raise rates on people without warning them, give them a chance to come and be heard, and get the rate out in the news. I don't consider buying water by the tank full when you want to to be the same kind of rate. I consider that to be something that if somebody wants to come up, pull the truck out, fill up with water, you sell it to them like a commodity. So I think we could amend that tonight if they wanted to change it without going through the process again.
I'm comfortable with that. I just didn't quite find, as you asked, that we did.
We did, I agree, we got that. Now, I asked Christie, what's the impact of not changing it? If you were more conservative, just about 1% or less of the, or so of the, of the entire budget for the water sewer. So the impact is small, but if they want to get it up, it really good helps, and we can do that tonight. Would be, we would ask Christie to withdraw her motion to suspend the rule. Julie, I'm sorry. To suspend the rule, go back, have a motion to amend, amend it, second it, dollar it, and then suspend it. We could do that.
I withdraw my motion and make a new motion to amend the ordinance to reflect the water delivered to a portable tank truck price change of 8%.
Jan, can you withdraw your second?
Now you made a motion to amend it.
Now I made a motion to amend it.
The rate to be... Are you sure?
Mm-hmm.
I'm a liar. I mean, it's both waters, it's a commodity, you can charge each other whatever you want.
They pay double already, right? Yes. So, I mean, you know, everybody wants to talk about having people come in and...
Okay, everybody wants to talk about having people come in and build, and build a city and do these things, but nobody wants to help that process. Now, these people are already paying double. I frankly don't think that 8% is right for them, you know, to have, to have theirs raised 8%. This is, these tanks are usually builders and those kind of people from what I understand. So, my thought is, do we really want to do it 8%? I mean, I think it's worth discussion.
Butch, are a lot of these both buys for people in the country who have cisterns? Do you, do you know what these, maybe what this water is used for, the bulk rate?
Yes, it's used for several different things, construction projects, spreading utility lines, electric companies mix their spray, it has to use water. We have a couple of tank trucks that deliver to wells and cisterns that's not served by any public water that are out in the county. That is most of our tank truck sales.
So it's not really just construction?
No, it's not just construction. There are people that haul water to...
To their homes.
Yes.
Okay, fair to spare being, but I just thought it was worth discussion. So, I second it.
Okay, so we have a motion, second to amend the ordinance that the portable tank truck charges will reflect the 8% increase. Any further discussion? All right, roll call votes. Roll call vote. Don Rawlins.
Yes.
Ed Stout.
Yes.
Julie Schaefer.
Yes.
Bill Sargent.
Yes.
Anita Lowery.
Yes.
Mike Nelson.
Yes.
Jan Throgmorden.
Yes.
Who'd that be then? I got you, didn't I, Julie?
Yes, you got me this time.
Motion passes.
Now I make a motion to suspend the rules, read by title on the ordinance 439.
Moved and seconded.
You seconded. Marsha, good here.
Ed. All right, roll call vote. Don Rawlins.
Yes.
Ed Stout.
Yes.
Julie Schaefer.
Yes.
Bill Sargent.
Yes.
Anita Lowery.
Yes.
Mike Nelson.
Yes.
Jan Throgmorden.
Yes.
Ordinance by title only, an ordinance to amend and fix rates for water and sewer services in the city of Westport Water and Sewer System declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Ed Stout made the motion, pass ordinance 439. Use the microphone. Okay, so Ed Stout made the motion, Jan seconded.
Okay, we're caught up. Thank you.
All right, roll call vote. Don Rawlins.
Yes.
Ed Stout.
Yes.
Julie Schaefer.
Yes.
Bill Sargent.
Yes.
Anita Lowery.
Yes.
Mike Nelson.
Yes.
Jan Throgmorden.
Yes.
Christie, can you do the math? Can you do the math on that 8%? You got it? All right, can you tell us? Just, yeah, just give us the three numbers in order. 1350, 1450, and 1570. Okay, item number two, resolution number 2014-03, a resolution adopting changes to personnel policy management for the city of Westport of Arkansas. This is a tobacco policy. We passed that last council meeting, that went into effect immediately, but what this resolution is asking for is to actually, what this resolution is asking for is, of course, to actually change the wording in our policy, personnel policy.
I make a motion to pass this motion, 2014-03.
Motion by Julie.
Second.
Second by Don. Any discussion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Pose by like sign. Okay, I, I need an amendment to the agenda here. I've got, I've got a couple more items that we need to cover tonight if we can. One is Kathleen Smith is going to go back to part-time employment, and she's gonna be in the main office. And so that's gonna leave a part-time position open in the police department. Right now, we have budgeted a part-time position there. What I'm asking the council is to have permission to pursue an employee for that position, either as a part-time or a full-time position. And the reason I'm asking for that is, we've been talking the last few days about what's really necessary for that position in the police department. So, in order to get that filled in a reasonable amount of time, Kathleen is gonna fill in until we, we complete that position, but she was hoping to be, to be able to get out of that position here this week. So in order for us to facilitate this procedure, I'm asking that the council will allow me to pursue an employee for that position at my discretion, either as a full-time or a part-time position.
I make that motion.
I second.
Jan, seconded? All right.
To give the mayor, the motion is to give the mayor the discretion to find an employee for the police department, whether it be part-time or full-time.
Yes. All right. Got that, Marsha?
I think so. If you're to, it's giving you permission to hire someone for that job, full-time or part-time, at your direction?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I need to clear up, thank you.
You seconded.
All right. Discussion?
I would, I would just curious, what is the job?
It's a secretarial position for the police department. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
You're gonna have to read my mind a little bit.
The only thing I'd add, and I was saying, we never really took the full-time position away. Because...
No.
We just went to full-time positions.
And that was what I needed to clear up.
Two part-times. So that full-time is a place that was never taken away by this case.
Okay, my concern was, it's on our current budget as a part-time position, so that, that was really the issue, was...
It just wasn't ever really taken away, so it's, and if you do go full-time, it'd be your discretion to put this motion.
Okay, yes.
But it, but it won't add anything because of one, that was getting, the only difference is the insurance, that person won't be getting insurance, so if you add somebody, it won't affect the budget, it happens at all. Clear on that?
Yes.
I just...
Anyone else? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Pose by like sign. Resignation letter, John Collins. John Collins turned in a letter of resignation.
Play, play.
Yes.
Number three. On my, the one you gave me, Westvest.
Number three, I gave you number three as Westvest?
And then the resignation is the last.
Okay. On Westvest, we have... On Westvest, we have, Westvest has been moving along really well. I did bring a handout. Is that back, is that back there, Kristi? Megan? All right, you wanna come forward with that? You're at the microphone, Megan.
I do love my mic, I'm not gonna lie. Okay, so I'm just gonna give you a brief summary, because I only have two minutes. Funding and expenses, we have $1,340 in donations thus far, $410 in booth rentals. There are 18 booths rented, but we need a few more to be rented out. We need more booths. We have $65 in pageant fees, so we have 13 contestants signed up so far. We would love to have more, especially with the older age group. We're expecting to need $365 more for pageant fees. And we're gonna have to spend $280 on portable toilets, and that does not include the tax on that. We haven't looked at the fees for dumpsters. We're hoping to get trash away to donate them, like they did for the Fourth of July festival. So if you know anyone who wants to donate, or rent booths, or be involved in the beauty pageant, or anything else we're doing, please send them to Westvest. 2 through 16. And there are handouts, some flyers at city hall, as well as sign-up forms. And any other time you have questions, you can just contact me. Francis is doing the music, Francis Hardison. For those of you who don't know, he's our master of ceremonies for Westport. He's really amazing. Beauty Pageant, again, we still need a lot more. It is happening over at the Little Opry at 6 o'clock, Friday night. So the kids will get to ride on a float or in a trailer, whatever they wanna do. They can be in the parade, win our booths. And we have a kids' area. Unity is providing us with bouncy houses, which we're very thankful for. First Baptist is organizing the scavenger hunt. I'll do a nature program. The recycling center has gotten involved with the Washington County recycling, recycling program. I'm not really sure what they're called. They have an educator program, and they're coming to make a bottle cap mural. And we would love to have more kid events and areas. So if anyone has ideas for that, we'd love to have them. We are also doing a box turtle race. So get your box turtles lined up, get them racing. Those are a lot of fun. I'm thinking mine might win, but I don't know, she's a little scrawny. We'll just have to see how it goes. And that's really all I have. We can make hobbies and get these to you by next week.
Thank you, Megan. And I think the car show is on.
Oh, yeah, there's a car show. And we have four street print- and Dutch Adams in the box.
What is Westvest?
13th and 14th of September. I'd like to thank John Collins for his service to Westport, both as a patrol officer and as his position as chief of police over the last year and a half. Thank him for the community, for the service that he's rendered to our community. And I have accepted that letter of resignation after John and I have had a conversation. If you see him, I know that he would appreciate thanks for his services in this town. So keep that in mind. That's it that I have. Is there a Marsha? Did I give you anything else?
It's all gone.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Passes.